All right, we have reconvened from our closed session and I would like to make the following disclosure. By a 5-0 vote, the City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:02 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, April the 10th, 2024. It is 6:02 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, April 12th at 1:00 PM and Wednesday, April 17th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at the three W's elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning a public comment may address the council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, we will move into the roll call. And starting with the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. And the land acknowledgement, if I can get our Vice Mayor to read that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of their bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you for that. At this time, let's see, I would like to call on Phil Lewis, our General Manager from the CSD, to help lead us in the pledge, if you would like to come forward. That's what happens when famous people come to City Council meetings.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And the first is Item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month.
Excellent. Councilmember Darren Soon will be helping lead this presentation. I would like to call forward Avantika Rao. Is Avantika here? Okay, well, we'll still read it.
Okay.
And enter it into the record.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. And you know, before I read, it's just, just want to acknowledge, you know, it wasn't that long ago that people of color weren't able to buy a home in a certain neighborhood. And I remember my father even telling me during the time where he would have to go knock on neighbors' doors in the neighborhood to see if my uncle would be able to purchase a home in their neighborhood because he was not Caucasian. So this is, it's nice to see that things continue to progress where we don't have to worry about that in today's society. So I'd like to read this proclamation for Fair Housing Month in April 2024. Whereas Fair Housing Month is celebrated each April across the United States, and this year we celebrate the 56th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968. And whereas a fundamental goal of government is to eliminate discrimination and ensure the rights of every resident to buy and rent a home without regard to race, religion, sex, national origin, disability, family status, age, source of income, sexual orientation, gender identity, marital status, immigration status, and first language. And whereas we recognize Fair Housing Month, it is timely that we reflect on the importance in communities, states, and the nation to affirm civil rights and oppose bigotry and discrimination. And whereas the City of Elk Grove affirms every American has the right to live with dignity in any area they desire without fear of discrimination and supports state and federal protection against discrimination in the sale and rental of housing. And whereas the City of Elk Grove supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, homebuyers, and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing laws. And whereas the City of Elk Grove is proud of its commitment to fair housing, recognizes the need to affirmatively promote fair housing in its policies and practices, and will continue to work to identify and remove impediments to fair housing choices. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2024 Fair Housing Month and confirms its commitment to ensure that there is equal access to housing for every member of our community. Ah, hello, Ms. Rao. Just in time. That was for you.
What a warm welcome.
Life Month.
Thank you. I'm Avantika Rao with Project Sentinel, and we work extensively in the community with
And presenting that will be Councilmember Kevin Spees. And I would like to call up representatives from the Sierra Donor Services.
fair housing issues and we're, feel the warm welcome here from the great City of Elk Grove.
Good evening.
So thank you, and I believe I've requested anyone from the community to comment tonight.
Welcome back, friends.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi, wanted to thank you for being here this evening and read a bit of this proclamation
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no one sign up to speak, so we will come down there.
for Donate Life Month, April 2024.
Oh, okay.
And recognize you for this effort.
Whereas more than 100,000 Americans and 20,000 Californians are currently on the national
Thank you.
[inaudible]
transplant waiting list, and another person is added to the waiting list every eight minutes, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting for a life-saving organ transplant. Whereas the most effective way to address this health crisis is to educate and encourage citizens to commit to the following actions. Register your decision to be an organ donor, or excuse me, an organ eye and tissue donor at your local, excuse me, in the national Donate Life Registry at be the gift today dot com or at your local DMV, and learn about living donation at donate life dot net. And whereas Sierra Donor Services serves as, excuse me, at the center of a dynamic interconnected system that involves donor families, local hospitals, and transplant centers across Northern California, including the greater Sacramento region, in the delicate and time-sensitive mission of saving lives through transplant. And whereas in 2023, Sierra Donor Services had its most successful year in nearly 40-year history, making 442 organ transplants possible, thanks to the selfless generosity of 171 Northern California organ donors. And whereas, don't, as where, excuse me, whereas the Donate Life cause of saving and healing lives through organ eye and tissue donation is of immediate and worthwhile importance. So be it resolved that the City Council and the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2024 as National Donate Life Month in the City of Elk Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And my apologies for being tongue-tied. I apologize. I don't know what my reading problem is today, but.
Yeah, please, would you like to address?
Absolutely.
The council and attendees.
Sure. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Kyla Aquino Irving, and this is my friend Chris Mateo, who some of you already know. I am a product of the Elk Grove School District. I am a neighbor to Elk Grove, not a resident anymore, but because of my kidney donor, I'm a recipient, my son that I was able to carry is now an Elk Grove Unified School District student himself. So Chris and I are both kidney transplant recipients, if you don't mind me sharing your story. We are both a testament to the miracle of organ donation, but we also reflect what the organ, organ waitlist looks like. Sadly, in California, 80% of our waiting list are people of color, and yet, people who look like us are the last people to sign up to say yes to organ donation. And so we use this month to bring awareness to this cause, to thank the people who've passed on and given their organs as donors. One donor can save up to eight lives through their gift, and so we are hoping to have more conversations in all of our various ethnic communities. We had a great year as an organization in recovering organs and tissues, but there's still a waiting list. And I had two people from Elk Grove who were supposed to be here, who are waiting for kidneys themselves, that were not feeling well enough to be here. So we stand in their place, very fortunate to have had the gift of life. And just to let you know that, you know, the people who are waiting are right here in our neighborhood. Yep, thank you.
Chris, did you want to share anything before we come down?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Yeah, like Kyla said, we're both kidney transplant recipients. I'm going on my third year after recovery. Can't believe it's been that fast. I think last time I was here, it was like the first year that I was celebrating with you all. But I just want to thank you all for your continued support, for declaring this month. It's very important, like Kyla said, to have this awareness, because if people don't understand the importance of it, you know, the quality of life alone, like to have this transplant, I was on dialysis for a little bit, and it was like, it just, yeah, I was able to do it at home and all this other stuff, but, I mean, just to be hooked up to that machine and not have that quality of life, and knowing that with kidneys, you only need one, right? My donor was like happy to give it to me, and I'm just so grateful for him. But not everybody knows about like how important this is and how easy it can be when we just sign up and donate one of our organs. And living donation is really important as well. One thing I do want to dedicate this to, my best friend who passed away in July. He was an organ donor, and he gladly gave everything that he had to be able to save lives after he passed away. And so for him, for everybody else that's willing to donate, so thankful, because you give so much to so many lives with just one person and their willingness and ability to do that. So thank you, all of you, everybody out there, to Kyla and Sierra Donor Services for everything you do to bring this up. It helps so many people that, you know, would otherwise be suffering. And so thank you all for everything you do.
Kyla, if you have any extra fans, maybe we can put them outside. We have a lot of people here today, so this is a good time to pitch. Please sign up, be an organ donor. All right, thank you. Next up is 4.3, Elk Grove Stars of Service Awards. Yes. All right, well, April is National Volunteer Month, a month dedicated to recognizing the importance of volunteering and honoring the significant contributions that volunteers make by generously donating their time and talents to worthy causes. One of the honors the City Council and I have is to recognize Elk Grove residents who volunteer their time and talent to make Elk Grove a better place to call home. Our Stars of Service Awards recognize residents in six different categories. With so many deserving nominations submitted for this program each year, it is very difficult to choose. I would like to thank the group that assisted with reviewing this year's applications. Vice Mayor Rod Brewer, Crystal Love Lazard, Lana Yoshimura, Cara Taylor Seaman, Tina Leavote, Jessica Carter, Mai Foster, Tracy Ferris, Brett Bartholomew, and Sarah Costa. Now let me announce our recipients for 2024. In the category of residents, neighborhoods, and community groups, the recipient is Hollis Herb. Nominated by John Ebner of Kasuma CSD, Hollis has served as the Chair of the Parks Advisory Committee for four years and is also a member of the Measure E Oversight Committee. This past year, Hollis helped to start a pollinator program designed to provide a haven for native birds, bees, and insects. The first pollinator garden was developed this year at St. Lawrence Park. Hollis also donated a little library to Lawrence Park. She often donates her time to local events, including the Giant Pumpkin Festival and park opening events. In 2023, she dedicated over 250 hours of community service in Elk Grove. Please join me in recognizing Hollis Herb in the category of social and community services. Hollis, are you here?
Yeah.
Please come forward. Please come forward, and Tamara is helping with the plaque distribution, and then we'll take a group photo with everyone. So for those that are receiving, please stay in the front as we go through all of the others. And you're definitely welcome to say something if you wish.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor Singh Allen. I'm really thrilled to receive this public award. It was enough already, it felt, just to know that I was finding a way to keep busy and contribute to this wonderful community that I found in my retirement, because my little sister used to live here before her husband's job moved. And I've just been so happy doing what I can, and I've found that everybody in City Hall, in the Police Department, and at Kasuma CSD that I ever interact with has just been lovely about the whole thing, very friendly, open, and helpful, and that's made it even more interesting. So thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Excellent. Great work. So, yeah, if you can stay, all of the recipients, as I recognize the recipient winners, as you get your plaque from Tamara, I ask that you stay up here after you make your brief remarks, so we can take a group picture.
Do you want to do a group versus?
Do you want to do individual? I mean, it's, how did we do it last year? I don't.
We did individual.
Okay, then let's all go up there. Rhimes. Robert, are you here? Robert, if you would like to come forward while I read some lovely things about you. Mr. Rhimes serves as Elk Grove's youth as a dedicated volunteer for Cub Scout PAC 255 and Boy Scout Troop 255. Robert is a member of the Council Advancement Team and a merit badge counselor. He is active in the Boy Scouts National Youth Leadership Team and acts as a mentor to youth leaders. Besides his active role in the Boy Scouts organization, he has served as the president of the Laguna Sunrise Rotary Club this year and donates time at the Elk Grove Teen Center. As Debbie shared in her nomination, Mr. Rhimes is always looking for ways to support and grow the youth of today to be the leaders of tomorrow. Please join me in recognizing Robert Rhimes. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All I can do is to say is thank you to everybody who supported me. I know, thank my wife and my daughter in the back for putting up with all the craziness I put them through. It wouldn't be possible without my fellow Rotarians and, of course, my cheering section in the back. And the not-so-cheering section, it's all, for me, it's, to me, it's all about giving back to the neighborhood, to Elk Grove, to these youth, so they'll have a better future. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We'll be right down. to honor those supporting the arts in our community and those supporting culture and heritage. In the category of culture and heritage, the recipient is Kelly Lee. Nominated three times by Kathy Lee, Ty Phan, and Katie Care. Good, there is Kelly. Kelly organized the Mid-Autumn Festival in 2023 Lunar New Year 2024 and is the primary organizer behind the Tet Festival for the Vietnamese community. Kelly brought the Tet Festival to Elk Grove this year after years of hosting it in Sacramento. The event was attended by thousands of community members. Katie shared in her nomination that Kelly has not only created enduring memories, but also forged bonds that transcend cultural boundaries, that bring people together in a spirit of joy and camaraderie. Besides her work on this festival, we also know and appreciate Kelly for her service on the city's Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Please join me in recognizing Kelly Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, City of Elk Grove, for providing organizations like ours with opportunities to bring events to Elk Grove and for fostering diversity in your community. Your support is instrumental in making Elk Grove a vibrant and inclusive city for all. I couldn't have accepted Stars of Service Award without the help of my board from NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce, VACOS Vietnamese, American Community of Sacramento, and CPALS in their dedication and support. So thank you so much. And I would like to invite them up as well, Twee and Ivy.
Congrat- for the Free Little Library in Elk Grove, nominated by Lana Yoshimura. Carolyn and her husband Brian introduced the first and only Free Little Library, or Flag, in Elk Grove. Installed in front of their home, the small curated space offers a chance to contribute or collect a piece of unique handmade art. Carolyn shares details on the pieces placed inside with a growing community on their social media channels. Anyone can contribute a piece of art. This is clearly a labor of love for Carolyn and Brian and demonstrates their commitment to promoting and encouraging art in the city. Please join me in recognizing Carolyn and Brian Baptista.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are extremely humbled to be here to accept the award for the Free Little Art Gallery of Elk Grove. We want to thank the Elk Grove Arts Commission for their support, and we want to thank Lana for the nomination. So this award is the result of our community's spirit and promotion of the arts. So we want to thank every single artist who share their artwork and every single person who took the time out of their day to stop by the gallery to support the artists. And as you know, we have a lot of talented people in this city who are very creative, and we hope that this gallery continues to be an outlet for them to share their artwork for free with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. for the Free Little Library in Elk Grove, nominated by Lana Yoshimura. Carolyn and her husband Brian introduced the first and only Free Little Library, or Flag, in Elk Grove. Installed in front of their home, the small curated space offers a chance to contribute or collect a piece of unique handmade art. Carolyn shares details on the pieces placed inside with a growing community on their social media channels. Anyone can contribute a piece of art. This is clearly a labor of love for Carolyn and Brian and demonstrates their commitment to promoting and encouraging art in the city. Please join me in recognizing Carolyn and Brian Baptista.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are extremely humbled to be here to accept the award for the Free Little Art Gallery of Elk Grove. We want to thank the Elk Grove Arts Commission for their support, and we want to thank Lana for the nomination. So this award is the result of our community's spirit and promotion of the arts. So we want to thank every single artist who share their artwork and every single person who took the time out of their day to stop by the gallery to support the artists. And as you know, we have a lot of talented people in this city who are very creative, and we hope that this gallery continues to be an outlet for them to share their artwork for free with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, in the category of arts, the recipients are Carolyn and Brian Baptista for the Free Little Library in Elk Grove, nominated by Lana Yoshimura. Carolyn and her husband Brian introduced the first and only Free Little Library, or Flag, in Elk Grove. Installed in front of their home, the small curated space offers a chance to contribute or collect a piece of unique handmade art. Carolyn shares details on the pieces placed inside with a growing community on their social media channels. Anyone can contribute a piece of art. This is clearly a labor of love for Carolyn and Brian and demonstrates their commitment to promoting and encouraging art in the city. Please join me in recognizing Carolyn and Brian Baptista.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are extremely humbled to be here to accept the award for the Free Little Art Gallery of Elk Grove. We want to thank the Elk Grove Arts Commission for their support, and we want to thank Lana for the nomination. So this award is the result of our community's spirit and promotion of the arts. So we want to thank every single artist who share their artwork and every single person who took the time out of their day to stop by the gallery to support the artists. And as you know, we have a lot of talented people in this city who are very creative, and we hope that this gallery continues to be an outlet for them to share their artwork for free with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Nominated twice by Isabel Tan and Jasmine Ria Rosa, I don't know, I'm sure I'm butchering it, I apologize. I'm sure I'm butchering it. I apologize. Joshua Green, or Coach Green, has been the assistant coach for the Kasumnas Oaks High School Women's Basketball Team for the past five years. He has donated more than 400 hours each season to help the team. In 2019, he was recognized by the school as Coach of the Year. On and off the court, he has inspired his players to work hard and do better by offering year-round encouragement, workouts, and highlight reels. Coach Green and his wife started a scholarship through the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Fund for players from CO. In addition to his service at CO, Coach Green coaches the third-grade girls' team at St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton and serves as a board member on the Sacramento County Children's Coalition and the Golden Empire Scout Council. For his work to inspire and support female athletes and young people across the community, please join me in recognizing Coach Joshua Green.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the recognition tonight. Just also want to appreciate staff and all the time that goes into putting together these programs, as well as the volunteers who took time to read nominations. And congratulate what a great group of volunteers that we're recognizing tonight, but all of those who are receiving recognition, as well as those who were nominated. So, I'm going to be brief, which is hard for me, so I'm going to try. But I just want to say, you know, in order to be active in the community, it takes time away from family. And so, I really want to appreciate Jessica and my daughters, Arelia and Eloisa, for that. And I love coaching basketball, and it would not be the same if it wasn't for Coach Paul and Coach David, who are here tonight. These guys, most of the year, are volunteers with me doing summer workouts, spring workouts, fall ball, long conversations about what's going to be at practice, how we're going to adjust, make adjustments, and just make it a lot of fun to be able to give back. So, thank you again very much. And I would appreciate if we can have players and the other coaches come up for a picture, too. I think they'd appreciate that, so.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to say that I still consider myself a proud CO mom, even though my children have both graduated from there, so way to go. All right, in the category of service organizations and groups, the recipient, the Boy Scout Troop 118. Nominated by Bob Coats. Would Troop 118 like to come up? All right, Boy Scout Troop 118 has been serving the Elk Grove community for more than 20 years. Current members have logged more than 2,000 hours of community service in the past year. From serving breakfast with the Lions Club at holiday events to supporting the annual community campout, this group has been actively contributing to Elk Grove events and fundraisers. Their service generated the donation of more than 1,800 items supporting the Elk Grove Food Bank and more than 200 pairs of pajamas for the women and children of St. John's. To date, 115 scouts from Troop 118 have earned the rank of Eagle Scout, scouting's highest rank. For their continued service to the Elk Grove community, please join me in recognizing Boy Scout Troop 118.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the troop, we're very happy to take part here in the city of Elk Grove. We all live here, you know, are growing up here. This is our community. And we'd also like to thank the pride of Laguna Creek Lions. They are our sponsor. They show us with their excellent service how to lead the way, and we thank them for everything they do for us as well. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to say thank you. Is there Joshua over here? Is that you? All right, your cousin says to congratulate you, and you've been doing amazing stuff, so Rosa Tapia, she's actually one of our city employees, so wanted to say that.
All right, in the category, last but not least here, the Young Volunteer of the Year. The recipient is Cassie Parsons. Nominated by our city's very own Femi Omatisho. Cassie joined the Elk Grove Youth Commission in 2020 and is currently serving in her fourth year in this group. She is the longest-serving youth commissioner to the city that the city has ever had. She has served a variety of special offices on the commission, including two years as chair. She is currently the vice chair. Her work on the commission has supported several successful events, including a youth mental wellness event and Family Fun Day. Cassie shows all the signs of an emerging leader, and we are excited to see where she channels that energy in the future. Please join me in recognizing Cassie Parsons.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I would also really like to thank Femi for nominating me for this award. It really means a lot. I've had the opportunity to get to know Femi by being on the youth commission, as stated. And I would also like to thank you for appointing me and giving me this opportunity to be on it for the last four years. Along with youth commission, I have also been a part of Pleasant Grove High School's Associated Student Body, where I'm currently the ASB Vice President this year. Along with both of those activities, I've been very involved within serving my community in many other ways. In addition to that, I also participated in the Elk Grove Civic Summer Internship. I am graduating next month from Pleasant Grove, and I plan on attending a four-year university and majoring in sports management and kinesiology. I would also really like to thank my parents for always being my biggest cheerleaders and supporters and always supporting me through everything I do. Once again, thank you so much for awarding me this very meaningful award.
Congratulations. I want to thank Hollis Herb, Robert Rhimes, Kathy Lee, Carolyn Bryan Baptista, Coach Green, Boy Scout Troop 118, and Cassie Parsons for the significant impact on the quality of life you're making in our city. Let's give them another round of applause. If you know someone you'd like to nominate for next year's awards, please visit the city's website for more information. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment. And we have two people signed up to speak. We will start with Lynn Wheat, followed by Susan Santra. For those watching online, we're letting the recipients and their families and friends of the awards clear out the chambers before we move on with the agenda. All right, if we can exit nice and quietly, is Lynn Wheat here?
Yes.
There she is. Lynn Wheat, and then followed by Susan Santra. If you want to wait another 30, just so we can hear you, that's fine. Okay, friends. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Wheat, you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to talk to you about something I'm passionate about, and that's land use planning. Since we became a city, I've been very involved with that. And what really started me was my son taking a class at UC Davis, a planning class, where his professors said that Elk Grove was the poster child of bad planning. So, that began my journey. And once again, I just would like to share something with you that I introduced at the Planning Commission meeting, and I'd like you to consider. I gave our city clerk some photos, and I'd like you just to pass them down and take a look, because sometimes pictures can say a million words. Tonight, I've provided you pictures of the CSD lot Elk Grove taxpayers will be buying in the future for the employee parking district, which was initially planned for a fire station. Page 17 of the staff report to Planning Commission referenced this lot. On pages 12 and 13 of the Zoo SPA document that you will be looking at, this is further described. I'm concerned this parking lot is located at the entrance of a neighborhood and is surrounded by houses. I request that to improve neighborhood compatibility, the proposed six-foot-tall tubular fencing be changed to match the existing masonry wall on the southern portion of the lot. I request the wall at the entrance be identified by community name and similar landscapes surround the perimeter. An employee parking lot in a neighborhood. Could you imagine purchasing your home in a master-planned community being told you would have a fire station across the street and learning afterwards that you would be looking out on a parking lot of cars? It is concerning to me that the zoo is spreading to the east side of Lot's Parkway. It is also concerning to me that we, as a city, continue to throw existing neighborhoods under the bus. This is not quality of life for any of us. I do not live near that neighborhood. This is not going to affect me in any way. But I live under "love your neighbor as yourself." And when I saw that, I thought, is this what I'd want? And then I thought I could say nothing. I can't say nothing. We continue to ignore the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Santra.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Councilmembers. My name is Susan Santra, and I'm a member of Toastmasters International. We have a club here in Elk Grove called Business Speeches. It's been in this community for 26 years. As we're coming out of this pandemic and we're finally meeting in person again, we are having a big open house on April 18 that Vice Mayor Rob Brewer is going to be our guest speaker at, and we are really excited to have him. I've watched people join our club that English is a second language, and they've been here for five years, and it increased their ability to get a new job in the medical field further than they could have on their own. I, myself, six years ago, would never have stood up here. I would be hiding in the back, waiting for my friend to drag me to the front. This organization is dedicated to learning to speak, communication, and leadership skills. We are inviting the community to this open house. We are meeting next Thursday at 6:15 at Mel Doc's Diner on Waterman Road. It will be a potluck, and we are inviting the community to join us. And I want to thank Councilmember Darren Suen, who has been at our club before and spoken with us. Thank you so much. Melanie remembers you being there. And it's just an open invitation to come practice and play with our club. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Susan was our final speaker for public comment, so I am going to close the public comment opportunity and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jason Berman, city manager. Several items to report on this evening. First of all, this Saturday, April 13, we have our Family Fun Day, returning to Old Town Plaza. Please come on out. It's noon to 4 o'clock. A lot of fun carnival games, music, activities, and food. The city's four-legged landscapers have returned. Nearly 7,000 sheep and goats have joined the Public Works team to lower the fire danger in heavily-weeded areas around the city. We also have the tracking on the city's website that we've had in previous years. People can find out where they are. People love to go out and take pictures and see the work that they're doing. So, that is starting right now. That should go through June. There is going to be a virtual workshop to provide the community with an overview of the View Zoo project, which was approved last week by the Planning Commission on a vote of 5-0. We'll review the financing plans, economic impact. It's scheduled for Wednesday, April 17, at 6 o'clock. Public is encouraged to attend online, ask questions. Details and a link to register for the workshop can be found at elkrovecity.org/zoo. The Elk Grove Arts Commission is seeking proposals for a public art sculpture for the new Elk Grove Library. This project will infuse more public art into the historic district and provide a warm welcome to visitors. Artists are invited to submit their statements of qualifications by 4 o'clock on Thursday, April 18. Mutual Housing and their partner Mogavero Architects will host the first of a series of community meetings on the planned 89-unit affordable senior housing complex in Old Town Elk Grove on Thursday, April 18, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Elk Grove Public Library, which is 8900 Elk Grove Boulevard. which is 8900 Elk Grove Boulevard. Attendees will have an opportunity to learn more about mutual housing, the project, design process, and the development timeline. Additional meeting dates will be shared as they become available. This Earth Day is April 22nd, and that marks the 10th anniversary of Elk Grove Special Waste Collection Center. Since opening its doors in 2014, the SWAC has collected 594 tons of household hazardous waste. That's roughly the same weight as 40 fire trucks. The facility plays a vital role in local conservation and sustainability, keeping excess materials out of the landfill and repurposing items in the reuse room. Stop by the facility Sunday through Wednesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Learn more about this wonderful facility at elkgrovecity.org/recycle. We encourage individuals to come to our Elk Grove Aquatic Center. There will be some water fitness classes offered at our aquatic center for free, some demo days that we have coming up on April 20th and 28th. Some of the classes, including deep water aerobics, aqua jogging, aqua spin, stretch, and more. Pre-registration is required. You can visit www.kasumnacsd.gov for details. And finally, the city and CyberProud will host a technology-focused career event on Thursday, April 23rd, at District 56 from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This event will connect visitors with some of the brightest minds in cybersecurity, infrastructure support, and software development. This event is free to attend, but registration is required. Space is limited. Dress for an interview. Learn more at cyberproud.org. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Any questions from colleagues? For the record, sir, is the Senior Housing, that's 100% affordable housing project, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have Lynn Wheat for item 7.5.
Good evening. I didn't get through the whole novel, but what I really want to talk about is Costco and the economic incentive that was given to the developer. I appreciate that you went ahead and paid that off. I anticipate that you did that, because we'll probably be looking for bonds in the future, and it would make us look much better as a city to bond leaders, lenders, excuse me. But what concerns me here, and I read this, and the funds to provide the incentive will come from sales tax revenues generated by the store and received by the city. So I'm just wondering, it says that we weren't going to, you know, our budget and things weren't going to be affected by giving this economic incentive. And I consider, hmm, we had to have Measure E so we could address the needs of the residents within our community. We continue to give large sums of money out for economic incentives, and I wouldn't have a problem with that if we would measurably be able to see what the return has been for those residents living here and paying taxes. So somewhere, maybe it's hidden in the novel, and I just didn't see it, but I'd like that to be declared, because I know this particular developer has received almost $11 million from us taxpayers. So that's what I'd like to see in the future, is when we're giving these incentives, that we really know, are we getting our money's worth? Thank you. And more, and more.
Thank you, ma'am. That was our final speaker for any consent calendar item, so I'm going to close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments from colleagues? If not, I would request an approval of the consent calendar.
Move consent.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 8, there are no public hearing items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 9, our regular agenda action items or recommendations. That one item is Item 9.1, which is Consider Appointment of One Voting Member to the Planning Commission. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I'm Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. Back in February, we initiated a recruitment for a pending vacancy, as Commissioner George Murphy stated that he would be stepping down once a suitable replacement was found. We got nine applications, and a 10th application came in for your consideration for a suitable replacement, but I will let all those candidates speak to you. We have one position for the Planning Commission seat, and you have 10 applicants that are before you. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Our first speaker is Gurman Singh, followed by Luis Cruz.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gurman Singh. Let me just tell you guys a little bit about myself. You know, I was born in India. I'm first generation. I've been raised in Elk Grove. I've been here majority of my life. I have, I'm currently working in the financial education space. I currently also work at Department of Social Services, and also had experience working at California Highway Patrol's headquarters. So, you know, I just wanted to talk about, you know, I've known Verinder for the majority of my life, you know, and I had the pleasure and opportunity to know him. And, you know, he has been a very well-rounded person. He's been genuine, caring, and, you know, a great role model. And he's been a great role model for helping the community, whether it's volunteering for toy drives, cancer runs, or other community events. And he's consistently demonstrated his commitment to community service by actively participating in various initiatives. As a role model, he leads by example. He continues to motivate the youth of the community of Elk Grove. He does not drink, or he does not do any sort of drugs. And he makes, he has always encouraged the youth to make smart decisions about their education or their future. His dedication to uplifting and empowering the young generation is truly commendable. He is one of the role models to finish college and continuously give back to our community, and to make it a better place for our community to live in. And these qualities will make Verinder a great Planning Commissioner, and give him the opportunity to impact the community more than he already is. And yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Luis Cruz, followed by Luis is Shakira Halim.
Good evening. My name is Luis Cruz, and also I want to kind of introduce myself to, I work for the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. A little bit of my role there is, so we have our employees that travel on state business, and we just got to make sure when they file their travel expense claims that they're in compliance with the state travel rules and regulations. And so I've been working there for about five years now, and so I pretty like, I like it. But enough about me. I do want to talk about, a little bit about Verinder. And so I've known Verinder, and I worked with him for a little bit. And I've seen his amazing leadership, communication skills, and commitment to the community of Elk Grove. He does have a love for rural community, and he is always willing to helping others. He, just like myself, he's ensuring that state laws are applied correctly and to any changes that are made. And I do believe he will, same thing, he's going to ensure that the, I'm sorry, I believe he will ensure the same type of compliance according to the, to the general plan and municipal codes. He is a great candidate for the Planning Commission, and I do hope that you consider him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Owen Reinwald, Reinwald. Oh, I'm sorry, Shakira. You're right, Halim. Sorry about that. Shakira. After that is Rachel Owen Reinwald.
Rochelle.
Right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shakira. I'm a supervisor at Department of Parks and Recreation in the Accounting System Unit, where I work closely with IT divisions to develop and maintain departments' fiscal systems, to do financial statement on automations, the process. So as you all may already have known, that Verinder is also a manager, IT manager at State Department. And I'm here today to tell a little bit about him, from my point of view. I have met Verinder at many different functions and events, and have had the opportunities to sit and listen to his missions and visions for his community, and some of the projects that he worked on with the Sacramento Punjabi Cultural Society, such as coordinating the events at the SES Hall, which has inspired me, as I, myself, who came from a minor at a group who also trying to preserve our language and culture for our younger generations. His generosity and ingenuity on sharing knowledge and informations clearly show that he is a down-to-earth person with a main focus on community tribes and helping others. Verinder's ability to take the time and care to listen to others caught my attentions. He is versatile with many great skill. Besides being IT and managing a large group of staff, he volunteers on program to coordinate the dances and speeches. He worked with the Sheriff's Department to ensure security and make sure all the venues requirement were met and compliance when the event was held. It is that leadership skill, quality of listening to others and working with them, that will make Verinder a great Planning Commissioner. So that's all from me, and good evening, Verinder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, is it Rachel or Rochelle?
Rochelle.
Rochelle, my apologies.
That's okay.
Rochelle Owen Reinwald.
Good evening. And I'll just clarify, I'm actually one of the applicants, so I just want to make sure my timing's correct. Okay, just checking, because if not, I have five people back here. No, just joking.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. So, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Councilmembers. My name's Rochelle Owen Reinwald. As a nearly 30-year resident of Elk Grove with deep roots in both rural and urban communities, I really bring a unique perspective and a wealth of experience to the role of Planning Commissioner. My commitment to maintaining the integrity of our city's land use policies while respecting its rural zoning principles really makes me an ideal candidate for this position. Over the past three decades, I have witnessed Elk Grove's evolution from a predominantly rural landscape to a vibrant urban center. On a side note, I have moved twice in Elk Grove, and I've continued to stay here for 28 years, nearly 30 years. So this firsthand experience has given me a nuanced understanding of the challenges and opportunities of managing growth while preserving our community's rural character. My upbringing in both a rural and urban setting provides me a unique connection to this issue. What I'd like to do, and I know I only have three minutes, so I'll be quick, is that, just to give you some background on myself, I grew up in Penrean, California, just up off IA-80, a very small community of about 5,000 people, where we had a five-acre plum orchard, where single-lane country roads, shared roads with horse and riders, and the occasional steer that had broken loose from its property. I attended a very small K-8 school, where our eighth-grade class of 58 students was considered large for our small but mighty school. I participated in 4H, and always enjoyed riding horses with the neighbor girl down the lane. I then moved to an urban living setting when my family relocated to the East Bay. And that's where I attended high school, and I then matriculated in my post-secondary experiences with college and community college. So this upbringing and my family's connection to Elk Grove's agricultural heritage have instilled in me a deep appreciation for balancing urban development with the need to preserve our rural heritage and quality of living. Nearly 15 years ago, just to add, my parents, sitting behind me, I retired and moved from Livermore to rural Elk Grove off of Sheldon in the rural area. My mother worked for Wentay Winery, and my dad was in commercial construction, and they now have a small vineyard that we make just for fun and to give away some, we bottled wine every year. So with my lifelong familial experience, not only in urban living, but also in the construction industry, I understand the delicate interplay between rural zoning principles and the broader goals that are outlined in our city's general plan. I'm committed to ensuring that the Planning Commission's decision reflects this balance. My father's a lifelong member of the carpenters' union, and as he has most likely shared in multiple presentations or casual conversations, he did work on the majority of the Gutridge homes in this community. In case somebody missed that memo, he was a carpenter on Gutridge Buildings before I was born. Oh, may I have just a few more moments?
I'm sorry, we definitely stick to the three-minute rule.
Okay.
We'll defer to the other speakers, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Irfan Mahmood, followed by Verinder Singh, and that is our
final speaker, unless someone should turn in a blue card.
Eid Mubarak.
That hits right here. Thank you, Councilmember Suen. For everyone here today, today's Eid, one of two of the most important religious holidays for Muslims in America, or Muslims worldwide. To make it relatable, it's like coming down on Christmas Day. So I am here, and I appreciate every one of you and everyone here that's applying and here, taking time out of their busy schedule as well. I would have had pretty much the entire Elk Grove Muslim community here, but that would be selfish, and I don't think they'd fit in here. I know they're watching, so Eid Mubarak to all of you. Honorable Mayor and respected Councilmembers, my name is Irfan Mahmood, and my family has been here for over nine years. My family and I live, eat, and breathe Elk Grove, literally. I wear a few hats as an angel investor, a general contractor, and a small business owner. As for technical qualifications, I have degrees in economics, law, accounting, and an MBA, none of which make me recognizable outside of owning the local nothing-bun cakes. My lovely wife works at Kaiser Promenade, right here in Elk Grove, as a clinical pharmacist. My three boys are all a part of Elk Grove Unified School District and attend Pleasant Grove Elementary. Mayor, thank you, and pat yourself on the back for the work you put in while you were on Elk Grove Unified School District's Board. We are benefiting. We live in the rural community. I built my own home as an owner-builder, and there's a lot of sweat, blood, and tears there. I'm very familiar with the city building department. I'd be lying if I told you we weren't on a first-name basis. I also serve on a few nonprofit boards, one of which is Local, Al Misba, which I know all of you are familiar with on the council and mayor. In addition, I proudly serve on Elk Grove PD, Chief Bobby's, we love you, Community Advisory Board. Mayor Singh Allen, you're a mayor of many firsts. You appointed the first African-American woman on Elk Grove's Planning Commission, the first Indian-American on commission as well. I speak for the Muslim-American community here. We'd love you to have you appoint the first Muslim-American on the Planning Commission. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Nope. Thank you so much, Eid Mubarak. Next up is Verinder Singh, followed by Gus Vina.
Good evening. I want to start off by saying thank you to the mayor and the city council members and the Planning Commissioners that spoke with me about the roles and responsibilities, about being a Planning Commissioner. And I also want to start off by recognizing George Murphy for his 17 years and thanking him for his service. I have lived in Elk Grove for over 20 years, and specifically have lived in the rural area for a few years now, and have fallen in love with the beauty of it. I have read and reviewed the general plan extensively, and in regards to the land use element, conservation, and safety element, I want to ensure that the rural area continues to have a voice for issues such as housing and water usage. After studying the Institute of Local Government Training Material for Planning Commissioners, I will work to ensure that I have a clear and comprehensive understanding of the general plan. Most important of all, I am willing to give whatever amount of time is necessary to the position of Planning Commissioner. Whether it is meeting with staff, meeting with members of the Elk Grove community, or the developers interested in projects, I will put in the time to understand state and federal law and how they continue to impact Elk Grove. In regards to the rural area, how the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act affects us, and also the local hazard mitigation requirements. I graduated from UC Davis with a degree in Community Regional Development, with an emphasis in organizational management and policy planning. The core of my classes included us working with nonprofits to meet codes and regulations to obtain funding for their organizations. For the past 13 years, I have worked for the state of California. I began my career at CalPERS, the state pension fund, and most recently became an information technology supervisor over the Quality Assurance Area at the Franchise Tax Board. My experience as a leader, team player, and as someone that operates off of state law will be helpful in my role as Planning Commissioner. I have worked with and volunteered with multiple Elk Grove nonprofits, such as the Sacramento Punjabi Cultural Society, which was recognized by the Assembly for their work to preserve the culture of rural Punjab. I have letters of support from Sacramento County Supervisor Patrick Kennedy, from when I worked with his office, to secure the permits for the Sikh Parade on Bradshaw Road. This event had thousands in attendance, and I worked to coordinate with CHP, the Sheriff's Department, and Sacramento Regional Transit in a short amount of time to ensure that the event could take place. I have support from Measure E and Chief's Advisory Member, Coach Harry Kangura, Amr Gandhi from the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, Mikey Hothi from the Lodi City Council, and many other members of the Elk Grove rural community. I hope to be a voice for organizations such as the Sheldon Community Association, and the Sheldon Road Estates Homeowners Association, and preserve the integrity and beauty of the city of Elk Grove. the city of Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Gus Vina, followed by Julie Singh.
Good to see you, Gus.
Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Gus Vina, I live in Elk Grove. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'd like to offer three things for your consideration in this important appointment. First, my wife and I have raised our three daughters in Elk Grove, starting in 1989. I was here during the incorporation effort of the city and have witnessed both the physical growth of the city as well as the growth and sophistication of our government leaders. I'm currently working in your police department as volunteer in the VIZ program, and I'm looking for additional ways to give back to this community in a meaningful way. Secondly, I have the experience to work alongside the other Planning Commissioners. I worked in government for forty years, thirty-one years at the local level. For ten years, I worked as city manager in three different cities. I clearly understand the importance of the Planning Commission and its role in supporting the city council and your important land use decisions. I also believe that the most important services are delivered at the city level. From the time we get out of bed each day until we go back to bed, we are connected to the services provided by the city. My understanding of city services will be of benefit if I am appointed to the Planning Commission. And third, I'd like to share my view on the issue of the rural communities, I know that is a focus of this appointment. My last assignment as city manager was in the city of Brentwood. Brentwood is very similar to Elk Grove in that it came from an agriculture and farming beginning. It is surrounded on three sides by farms, vineyards, and wine tasting. As city manager, I worked alongside the city council, the business community, and the landowners to create opportunities for all various elements that make up a thriving city. In listening to the mayor state of the city, something resonated with me that I think is relevant to this recruitment. The mayor spoke of diversity. Diversity in our population, diversity in our business opportunities, from Nordstrom's to family-owned bookstores, diversity in housing choices for all income levels, diversity in living environments, everything from walkable apartment complexes to the multiple-acre ranches in our rural communities. I reviewed the general plan, and its vision for the land use includes clear language that is supportive of these diverse choices, including your rural communities. It will be critical for the Planning Commission to understand and move forward with the vision laid out in the general plan. So in closing, I share with you that I love Elk Grove, I feel ready and qualified to do this job, I believe the job you are doing to improving diversity and options for our citizens needs to continue. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker is Julie Singh. I like all the Singh last names. No relation to any of them, by the way.
I was just gonna say, let me disclose.
Just want to make that clear.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to tell a little bit about myself. So echoing some of the comments already made, I remember migrating here at the age of ten and been in the city for almost thirty-five years, and can't imagine, even though I've been heavily recruited to go to other cities nearby, and the journey has been amazing. I think early on, the foundation that I received from the, you know, from schools to community volunteering, I decided very young that I wanted to give back. At the age of fifteen, I volunteered for Methodist Hospital until I joined Sac State, and then furthered my education with my MBA at East Bay, where I interned and recruited some of my classmates to Elk Grove during COVID because they could live in a bigger home and work from home, work from home, right? Why I think I want to be part of this, I don't have the expertise of different commissions or planning, but I do have almost fifteen years at Verizon Wireless, where I managed over two hundred headcount, where I learned how to be a team player, vision, making sure that I reach goals, and really, you know, understand how to take from point one to the end as a group. Now I work for the Director of the State Compensation Insurance Board, which is obviously workers' comp, so we work with, you know, different businesses in the community, and the job, and my role is Director of Customer Experiences, to listen, really to listen to our customers, which is our policyholders that are doing businesses, right, in California, and how do we make sure that they continue to be happy, they continue to be supported, and we provide insurance so they can stay in business. We know that insurance now is not easy to get, and insurance companies are not accepting, so my job is to make it as easy and work with regulations and the law to get them in there. And I'm very proud when I go to businesses and I tell them I work for them, and they thank me for letting them be insured with our organization. I think it's high time that I give back to the city. I love the diversity. I constantly go to nearby cities and talk about how this is one of the most diverse communities. I love all the parks that we have, I can go any evening and make friends. I love that I go to the gym, and I don't ever have to feel uncomfortable sitting on that platform alone or in that class. I feel like giving back to the city in whatever way is possible, I will try for this, and I will continue to try for other opportunities if it works out. I am definitely very resilient, and I'm a goal-driven person. I love people, I just love working at any platform where I think I can see the future. I want to see Elk Grove to continue, you know, growing. I want to have a voice as a customer of Elk Grove City in that decision-making. Again, obviously, I serve my community in church, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Julie was our final speaker, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Wow. This is not an easy decision. We have some amazing applicants. We always get a great amount of applicants with just a diversity of experience, a wealth of knowledge, and a passion for our city. So I want to thank everyone, even those that did not speak, those that applied. It means a lot that you are willing to step up and serve. So I don't take this decision lightly when I make a recommendation, because I know Mr. Murphy, George Murphy, these are some big shoes to fill. So whoever gets this appointment, I want you to know right now, these are big shoes to fill. And when we started this process, this recruitment process, one of my requests and desires was to appoint someone to represent the rural community. And should we not have had applications from the rural community, I would have considered others. But because the rural community deserves to have a voice and an ambassador who is their voice and representative on the Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't mean to rub, but I just, this, I don't usually speak out like this, but this, I don't even know who you're gonna put forward, but I just want to at least be able to have my say.
Of course. I mean, you all will have your say.
Yeah. But, well, and I know you put forward, so we approve, but I look out there and I agree, there is a huge amount of talent, great people that applied. What really spoke to me, and all the people that came out and spoke for Mr. Singh was great, fantastic, but the only thing that really spoke well to me was Irfan, this is his third time applying.
I know.
Okay. I just want to say, and as a business owner and.
Yes, thank you.
Future things, thank you. I appreciate the consideration.
Yes, thank you for that, and that isn't all of our packets, so you all should have had all of that information. And so there's, going back to the service of George Murphy, those are, again, big shoes to fill. The rural community, going back to, I believe the rural community deserves a voice, and we have three applicants from the rural community that I considered very strongly. Unfortunately, one of them applied late. So as a matter of respect to all other applicants, I'm not considering that application. Then I also looked at the totality of the application packet, the years of service, the community service, the educational background, how long someone's lived in Elk Grove, but then I took the advice and counsel of two Planning Commissioners, which I think was important in this decision-making process. One of those is the current Chair, Dr. Suman Singhah, and the other is our retired, now retired, very sad, retired Planning Commissioner, George Murphy. And both of them rallied around one candidate, who they felt was the strongest candidate because they were ready, willing to serve, and had the time, and had the strong community support based on the packets that they reviewed as well. But their council, particularly the Chair, but most importantly, George Murphy, his input, of course, is invaluable because he is a voice and continues to be a voice of the rural community. So there are two very strong candidates and strong applications. So looking at all of those things, but really honing in on our Planning Commission's input as well as community support, not only those emails that we received, but the package, this was not easy. I will say, we are on equal footing in a lot of respects. And so that's when I had to dig even deeper, not just on, you know, the interest level, the community engagement, but I really went back to those Planning Commissioners because these two Planning Commissioners had an opportunity to meet with this individual. That means a lot as well. So at this time, based on all of those considerations, and knowing that this conversation, this recommendation is hard, but I feel comforted knowing that the two Planning Commissioners, Chair Singhah, not Singh, but Singhah, and George Murphy, did rally around this person. I am bringing forward the recommendation of Verinder Singh. And I believe our Vice Mayor had an opportunity to meet with Verinder as well, so if you would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance to speak with several of the candidates, and I encouraged them to speak to the Planning Commissioners, as well as the other council members, but really to the Planning Commissioners, because at the end of the day, the, all of you, whichever one gets chosen, would have to work with, as a teammate, with the Planning Commission. And that was one of the things that rang true in my conversations with most of them, is that they wanted someone who could be a team player, who could work with them. Because the work that is being done through the Planning Commission is very labor-intensive. It requires a lot of reading, a lot of research, and a lot of communication, constant communication. And the Planning Commission, from the entire tenure that they've been in existence here in Elk Grove, has been really the backbone of the city, because a lot of the decisions that are done are not done or envisioned as a rubber stamp that is passed on to the city as a double rubber stamp. Serious thought, serious consideration, and real work goes into it, and so it's important for that individual to not only be a team player, but to really be a part, learn the process, because you're not going to automatically step into the role and put seventeen years into your hip pocket. Only one person enjoys that right now, and that's Mr. Murphy. And so I'm comfortable with the mayor's selection, because we got someone who, like the other candidates, but has the background, lives in the rural community, is engaged with the community on a regular basis, but also will show a willingness to learn and grow in that position, and public service is the key thing that their desire is. It's, and that's a key trait. And I think I saw, I know I saw that in all the candidates, but when talking to Verinder Singh, he exhibited all the qualities that would make for a good Planning Commissioner, solid Planning Commissioner, that would be on there for years to come. So I'm very comfortable with the mayor's selection.
Look to my right, Councilmember Robles, any comments?
I can.
Sure.
So, Madam Mayor, I can certainly support your recommendation, and I think Mr. Singh would be a very good addition to the Planning Commission. I did have an opportunity myself to serve with past Commissioner Murphy, and I didn't get my chance to say it last time, George, but thank you very much for everything that you gave to me, and all the learning that I did. So in that, I mean, this is a very important, significant change for me, and I can certainly support. I do want to say, however, that you do have a very, very, very tough decision, because I'm very familiar with Irfan and the good things that he does in the community. We have worked on a few projects together in the community. My wife has worked with him at ARI on the board, and I consider him a very, very good friend, and I think he is very, very well-qualified for this. I, again, this is probably one of those items that is, you know, I love hearing about new people who are coming and what they're doing and all the support and everything, but then I hate making this choice. So, anyway, I can certainly support you, Madam.
I get to be the bad guy.
You get to be the bad guy, bad person, excuse me.
Bad person.
You started it.
Yes. Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to retired Planning Commissioner George Murphy. When I first got on the Planning Commission, I was welcomed with a smile, grace, wisdom, knowledge, everything, all under the sun. When I was selected on Planning Commission, I think I might have been twenty-seven, and it was a new, nothing prepares you for Planning Commission, and nothing prepares you for the rural community. So this isn't an easy, you know, selection. When it comes to rural community, when it comes to rural community policies, this is super important. I would say even Planning Commission is one of the most important bodies here in Elk Grove, because you do deal with land use. You deal with development, you deal with projects that come down, and sometimes we don't see the projects, it goes to the Planning Commission, and then it comes just to us through our approval. And when we're talking about looking, you know, in the next fifteen to twenty years, we have to start developing smart. And I'm a big proponent on developing smart, and I can talk about it a lot, but I just want to say this is not a tough decision, but also don't take this appointment or, you know, appointment to the Commission lightly. You have seventeen years of big shoes to fill. Oftentimes, the toughest votes come before the Planning Commission, and you sincerely have to do your research, you sincerely have to communicate with your community. I was able to cut my teeth on policy on a big hospital that was gonna come in, and that was with Planning Commissioner there back then, Chair Murphy. And it was three Planning Commissioners. I was the newest one, that was two months into the job, right? So this decision doesn't come lightly again, but I really want everybody who applied to know that in reviewing your resume and reviewing the letters of support, you guys are way more than qualified. I don't think I had this on my resume when I went to the Planning Commission. And this one, I think, is one of the toughest decisions to make, right? I saw that someone, I believe, went to Cambridge Law or was studied law, right? We have a couple lawyers in here, then we have a city manager, retired city manager here. We have a young professional who's here, right? So with all of this, that's kind of what I'm thinking of, is like, how do we plan now in Elk Grove as we consider moving forward as a community, as in the region, and then making sure that we plan smart development? There is no reason that we should have a quick-wag next to a housing project, and I'll continue to say that. I think we should plan smartly, there shouldn't be a storage unit next to housing development in when it's low-income family, right? So I'm always looking at the future, how can we plan good? And I hope that when we select someone, that that would be something you would consider. And not only, you know, finishing up your appointment, no, go back to the rural community and genuinely have conversations. For when I was appointed, for the several months afterwards, I would always call Frank Mehta, who seat position I stepped into, right? And we had lunches and coffee, because I wanted to get to know more about development. I wanted to get to know the experience of that. That way you can cut through everything else, and then ultimately, you're there to make a decision for the city, but learn from your fellow Commissioners. So I'd like to hear what our Councilman Suen would like to say too on this matter, and then let's go to a vote.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Robles. I think you heard where the votes are, but I do want to emphasize the amount of talent, again, that applied. I also want to thank everyone for their interest.
I also want to thank everyone for their interest, as well as recognize Commissioner Murphy's service to our community. He's done a fantastic job. I've known him for, well, all of us have known him for a long time. Which brings me to my point and my recommendation for Erfan over this. Mr. Singh, you'll do a fantastic job. You're extremely talented. We had a chance to speak on the phone. I know Mr. Vena, obviously, with his professional experience, Rochelle, very much the same. Everybody in this, that applied, I believe, will do a fantastic job. My only thing was, all of us here came up through the community before we became either planning commissioners and then eventually elected officials, whether it was CSD or school board. And so my only thing was, you know, Erfan had put in a lot of years of work, not just applying number of times, but the amount of things he's been involved with in the community. And that, I just felt a sense of, you know, somebody who actually takes that time to invest in their community and, you know, progresses along, I think that just deserves a shot. So again, Mr. Singh, nothing against you. I know you would do a fantastic job, and I look forward to working with you. But I just wanted to make sure that Erfan was properly recognized.
Absolutely. And like I said, this was not easy. I wrestled with this up until like maybe 3 o'clock, and then it made it even harder when everyone spoke. This was not easy. And this is probably the hardest appointment because, you know, the talent pool was so great. I have tremendous respect for Mr. Vena, who wants to come out of retirement and step up and serve in this capacity. Like, wow, kudos to you that you still have that passion for Elk Grove. That means a lot to me, a lot. And Erfan, of course, you know, like I said, this was, this was not easy. But I also believe that, you know, taking, looking at all of the reasons why I did put Mr. Singh's name forward, that planning degree, I think, will be super helpful. The educational background, the community service, the longtime resident of Elk Grove, 20 years, you know, and community service, those, all of those things matter, but that counsel back from the planning commission really made a big difference. So without objection, that would be my recommendation. Yes, we're good? All right. This doesn't require a formal vote. This is, if we have at least three or more yes nods, we're there. So I just want to thank everyone yet again for applying. We had an amazing talent pool. So thank everyone for stepping up. There are other opportunities for boards and commissions to be involved in this great city that everybody loves. So thank you all. And with that, we will move on to our next item. Congratulations to Mr. Singh. And thank you to everybody else. Next up is item number 10, council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I will go to my left. Any questions or reports?
After your report, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Last Thursday, we, the Sacramento Public Library, J. Flowers Authority, had its meeting where we, the main gist of it, talked about our budget. Budget's pretty sound and clean, but also encouraging people to be friends of the Sacramento Library. There is an active online drive for that going on right now as we speak. So if you definitely go to the Sacramento Public Library's website, there should be a site to go to, Friends of the Sacramento Public Library, to sign up and enroll and be a friend of the Sacramento Public Library.
Councilmember Spees.
I do have something. So about, about 45 days ago, I asked that we have a 60-day review on the Aquatics Center. Much to my chagrin, on April 24th, I mean, that's when it's supposed to be, I'm having a difficult time moving a client appointment. So what I'm, I think it's gonna be canceled, but I don't want to ask for something and not be here when it is. That would look really bad. So what I'm asking is, is it possible perhaps to move that 60-day review another 30 days to, I think it's May 22nd? Can we move it to that, if there would be concurrence to do that? Is that?
Sure.
I don't want, I mean, I just don't want to not be here when there's something that I had to call.
No, that's, no, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, we can certainly move it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I had.
And that's it. Councilmember Robles.
Nothing to report. I had a regional sand meeting today, but.
All right. SAC RT, which we had on Monday, just various updates on all of the great things taking place with SAC RT. So that is the end of my report. I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:36 PM. Thank you. Good night.